I want to welcome each of you here tonight. We're thrilled that you are here. This is the work session for this month. We will have our regular session next Monday night. So at this time, we would like to observe a moment of silence. And if you would like to join us in that, I ask you to do so. Thank you. At this time, if you'll stand with me, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I know that everyone has had an opportunity to look at the agenda. So are there any changes or additions? All right, then, the agenda for the April 12th, 2021 work session will be approved with no objection. Anybody sign up for public comment?
No.
No? All right. So we will move right on. In our first item of business tonight, we are very excited to have with us Joel Carter from Jumper Carter Sees Architects. And this is the company that is, are the architects that are designing our Seneca Middle School. So we're very excited that Joel is here. And I know he has great things to show us. So at this point, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, remember this is board. Dr. Thorson, we are happy to be here and I'm happy to represent our firm tonight. We do have some, I feel like some exciting things to show you with new Seneca Middle School. And, you know, to start out with, we'll look at the site plan. And the site plan, just to let you know, it's, we're right at 169,700 square feet in the building. We've got flexibility built in for the school. We've got, actually, there are three classroom wings for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classrooms. We have 14 classes per wing, which actually gives us expansion built into the school on every wing. We currently are expecting roughly 600, excuse me, 850 students on day one. That number is going to change back and forth a little bit depending on the end of the time of the year, et cetera, and also folks moving in. But we really have the capacity for right at 1,000 students. So we've got plenty of room there on day one. Ultimate capacity is 1,200 students. We have master plan in roughly 250 parking spaces, which may not sound like a lot, but actually for a middle school, that is ample spaces for a middle school of this size. We have the practice field for football, et cetera, and also PE. The track, I may point out, there will be a track planned in. It may not be asphalt on year one, but we do plan on that asphalt to occur depending on budget. There's also immediately outside of the, and we'll see this momentarily, immediately outside of cafeteria area, kind of into courtyard, we're going to have a master plan in, an amphitheater. Now, we may not be able to afford that on day one, but we have a master plan in, so it can be added at any point in time. But hopefully, the budget is going to be right and we will be able to install that initially. But again, we like to win the sale. Coming in off of Wells Highway, we have the parents that will enter on the drive to the right. And then we have plenty of stacking space for those parents. That way, we don't back up out on Wells Highway. DOT does rounds on that. We've actually worked with DOT to make sure that we have stacking available for that. Buses will enter in off of James Way. And they'll drop off, parents and student, and bus riders will drop off at the same location, which will take you into really the gym entry. And from that gym, and again, we'll see this momentarily, the gym cafeteria kind of backed up to one another. And we have the opportunity for all the students to be housed there or they can go, depending on, again, district standards have changed with COVID, but they can go on to their classrooms, et cetera. But having that common entry, we felt like is very important. And then we also have on the western end or the left-hand side, is our teacher parking. So we have teacher parking there. Kind of covers, I think, the site plan. And we can back up to any of this if you have questions. Again, the building is basically built in three components. On the right, we have more of an electives area, which is the gymnasium, cafeteria. We have the band, choral, orchestra areas. Also, a PE classroom there. In the center, we've got the administration area, which includes admin, media. We have our sick room there. Interesting thing about the sick room that we have, we have a wellness side. And then we also have a sick room type of side there. And again, that's a reaction to COVID. And, but also, it makes sense to do this in our schools. We have the art room right beside the media center. As we go down the wings, we have the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade classroom wings, which are pretty much all the same. If you notice, we have the corridors of kind of shape in a V shape. At the end of the corridor, we're roughly 10 feet wide at the end of the corridor on the top side of the plan. As you come down and as more and more students gather into those corridors, it gets wider. And therefore, that way, we can practice social distancing. Of course, in times of COVID or the general flu, whatever. It also helps, and we've been doing this for, our school designers, for roughly 10 years. But it helps with students bumping elbows, et cetera, allowing a little more space as you go into the main, what we refer to as Main Street. We have also two areas. If you notice that on each one of the wings, there's kind of a side exit that goes out to the courtyard area. And we have planned in a little, what we refer to as a little pop-up to let natural light in on the center of that corridor. Because those corridors do get long. And that allows just natural light to come in, brighten things up. That is also an option that we'll have. If the budget allows, we put it in. If it doesn't, we take it out. At the intersection of the Main Street, what we refer to as Main Street running east and west and the intersection of the north and south quarters, there's also another pop-up that will add that. And that brings up, if you noticed that we have an area called PS. And what that is, is a project studio that is more of a flexible, multitask type area. We also have, and the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade wings are pretty much all the same with science labs that we have there. In addition, on the eighth grade wing on the far left-hand side, we have an ag lab. As a part of the curriculum within ag lab, we also have a greenhouse. And so we have access out to the greenhouse. And all of that area is, will be a secure area. It'll be secured with fencing so that the students won't be able to allow intruders to come in, et cetera. And again, it's all about student protection there. So again, breaking the school up right in to left, electives wing per se with cafeteria. I may also say the cafeteria will seat 360 students at tables. However, for performances, we can be over 550 in that area if we set it up just in chairs. And that allows aisles, plenty of room, circulation, et cetera. Media center, admin area is the other component. And then also the classroom wings there. As far as what it looks like from Wells Highway, looking over the parking lots, et cetera, we have the school proper. Looking at the classroom wings, you can see the pop-ups that I was referring to about mid-wing of the classrooms. On the front side is, again, looking out, we have the electives areas such as orchestra, band, and also choral areas. And then the gymnasium and the cafeteria are the higher volume areas on the right-hand side. You can see the bus area coming in on the right to the drop-off area there. And then parents circulate around on the front of the school. A closer shot of that front entry. And the materials is very traditional materials utilizing brick. And we have some stone, stones more of an applied type of corripstone. That's relatively, very economical, I should say. And then the ceiling up underneath that entry area, you may say, well, it looks like wood. Well, it does, it will look like wood. And Mr. Alexander has seen this, but it's actually a metal ceiling that mimics wood. And again, an economical solution to a nice entry area. So those are kind of the elements of what we have. And with that, we thank you. And I will open up for any questions which you may have.
We've been meeting for a long time trying to get this together. And we understand that it's a process. But the good thing that has happened is that even though we're going to be, you know, a year off from what we would be because of funding and that, it gives us time to make sure we've got everything covered. We've gone through, right now, what we're doing is we're getting some new bids on pricing and stuff to try to make sure we're very accurate with our budget so that we have to, if we have to value engineer something out, you know, take something out, or we can add these alternates in and that. So Trail is working on that. And we'll be meeting with everybody involved in, you know, the next several weeks to look at the numbers for the budget again. But we understand it's going to be tight. And we want it to be a wonderful school for the Seneca area. They've waited patiently for this time. And it's time for us to get them what they need. And we feel like that this building design would do that at this point. So we're excited about it. Wish it could happen quicker, but, you know, money's the big issue. And we continue to work on it. We've got a meeting out on the site Thursday to look at it, so.
Is there a prototype?
No, not to this.
This is not one? Okay.
And we went through rather rigorous, rigorous design phase and went through several iterations. And part of this is, the site does look. And we wanted to get, be able to place a building on the site so that it was economical. We looked at two-story buildings also. And we decided that that just was not right for the district in this particular area, especially with the middle school. So we came back and continued the design process and came up with this particular plan. I think Dr. McDowell and Mr. Hand and Mr. Alexander, I think, and also Dr. Thorson have been in meetings, design meetings. And so I think we all felt very comfortable with this particular design.
We were very comfortable with Western Middle. Not that these are exactly the same designs, but the three classroom wings with the Main Street corridor that connects those has been extremely efficient, easy to supervise students, just a good organization for a middle school. So that's kind of the backbone of it. And then, of course, Joel and Ashley put in some differences here and there. But we feel like it's going to be a really nice design.
We also tried to learn from our other schools and things that worked well, like we said, the three hallways and that. And then maybe things we want to do differently and learn from it too, like a gymnasium and that kind of stuff and how you set that up. So it's, I think it's been a good process. You know, we've had a lot, a lot of time has been spent on it. And I think, you know, we'll continue to tweak a few things. But I think this is the consensus for the best plan at this point.
Can you go back to the drawing of the school itself? Just for context, this surprised me when they told me it. And I still don't remember the exact number. But in the end, from gym down to the ag room, what's that distance?
It's about 800 feet. So you can get your steps in and go around.
That's the only reason we put the eighth grade down there. I think, you know, typically, they're the more mature and they can handle it and that. But it's a.
Oh, one other thing that I forgot to mention is gymnasium will seat 1,200 students. So it is designed to seat the student body.
That's correct. And seating on both sides.
Yes, that's what I was talking about. I was saying it with the gym, what we learned from the gym. It will have seating on both sides. And it will have retractable, so it won't be, it won't be the permanent seats like.
Very flexible space.
That's good.
And you can set chairs up in it, et cetera.
Mr. Carter, where did I understand the health room, sick room?
Yeah, so the health room is in the administration area. And I can bring a large plan of that, I should have. But in that space, we do have, you'll come in and many students on a day-to-day basis will need medications, be it insulin, you know, whatever it possibly could be. But we also have an area that with two carts and is actually kind of to the side. And that way, we can bring a child in that is sick with, you know, run of fever, et cetera. Maybe COVID symptoms, flu symptoms, whatever it may be. Put those children there. And we have ventilation in there that exhausts that air out.
Almost like a doctor's office where you have the well side, the sick side, kind of doing that same kind of concept with that.
This is the reason I bring that out is this is the first time in new design that we've done this. Again, a reaction to COVID. But it makes sense. And we've always had the space there, but through a little different arrangement, now we've kind of have separated the wellness side from the sick side.
Good job.
Are there student lockers or is that kind of a thing of the past now?
We do not have any student lockers.
Just in the locker where the gym, the B area, commonplace, we lock in that locker.
And that is disappointing. That is, in our designs now, we just don't have to put any locker room areas.
I understand.
For several reasons, one is there aren't any. And another is, if anything bad happens, it typically is in the locker.
Exactly. Now I'm surreal.
Do we get?
We're aware, the technologist has called it.
Have we gotten any pushback from parents on kids hauling around 60 and 70 pound backpacks?
Some like long-term.
We have gotten some stuff in the past. We haven't gotten as much now because a lot of the stuff is through the Chromebook and that. So the days of that where they say, and the backpack weighs more than the kids. That's kind of, they may have books that they leave in their desk and have for different things. Or they have one that they take home and leave there. There's not a whole lot of in and out on a daily basis with that and with the schedules, the way they are for classes that most have in the high school. Middle school is where we probably had the most complaints in the past. But even there, this year, it's been minimal. Well, we know you've got a long trip ahead of you. We appreciate you coming up to share with us.
The way I look at it is just about 35 minutes worth of Chromebook or something.
Yeah. Enjoyed that on the way out. And we thank you for coming up and sharing with us and all the work you do with the district.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hand. We appreciate the fact.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thanks, Joel. Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Well, that was exciting.
Yes.
Good to see progress. All right, Dr. Thorson. What do you have for us tonight?
So a couple of good happenings. Our staff, most of them who wanted to have the vaccine have already had their second shot. And we're probably about a week away from all of our staff members being fully vaccinated. They took advantage of that. So that certainly brings a little extra comfort in our schools and amongst our staff. So that's a very positive thing. And then the other thing is just we're beginning to start talking about end-of-the-year things. Now, I said earlier today that if in August, somebody would have told me that, you know, come April, you're going to be talking about graduation and testing and things like that, I would have taken that with me. And, you know, we can look back now and say it's been a trying year, but it's been a positive year. And, you know, aside from minor closures, we've operated this whole school year without. We did close a grade level in one of our middle schools for two weeks. But outside of that, we just closed a few classrooms, elementary classrooms. And we have had what I would call a successful year, particularly with the circumstances we've faced. Now that said, the federal government did deny the South Carolina request to be exempt from the standardized tests this year. So I mentioned, we are talking testing now. So that's going to be coming up in next few weeks. But the positive spin on that is we do need to see where our students are right now. We need to see how far behind they are, if in fact, they are behind because of COVID and the abnormalities with our schedule over the past year. Because even though we've not had any large-scale closures, we have had many students who have been out because they get quarantined. And we've had a disrupted schedule, to say the least. But again, positive. Of course, we sent out, Ms. Goddard sent out today, our graduation announcement to announce, May 29th, in our high school stadiums. We'll be sending out more information about things like that. Our schools are operating. And we're still keeping most of our protocols in place. We feel like just hold steady till the end of the year. And our hope is that in August, we can return to more of a normal school setting. But we're doing well. And then one other thing before offering questions is I left, or Ms. Goddard actually left at your places, a sample school board goals document. We're going ahead and starting to think through the 21-22 school year. And this is something that in just a minute, we're going to talk about board meeting date changes that we're going to recommend to you. And we would like to have this completed in June. So this is just a new format. A lot of the same information that was on last year's. But we want to give you plenty of time to think through. And of course, we'll have some suggestions. There's some suggestions on here. But we want you to have plenty of time to think through any goals that you would have for us or our schools so that we can have this document completed in June so that we're free to talk about it with our employees and our students come July 1st and the start of the new fiscal year. And that's all I have unless you have specific questions.
Anyone? Oh, I did have one thing. How will we handle testing kids that have been at home? Will they have to come back to school?
They have to come to the school.
I thought that was right.
The one exception the federal government made, normally, there's a 95% testing threshold that we have to meet. And the federal government did say this year that states will be held harmless if they don't reach that 95% threshold. So we will ask all of our virtual students, SDOC at-home students, to come back to the school to test. But if they don't, then we won't be held accountable for those students not tested.
Good information. Here, what else? All right, thank you very much. Ms. Moore?
Hello, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
I'm good. And so I think March was pretty much a regular month. Was there anything that I would actually point out? If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Gloria?
Yes, sir.
Down towards the bottom there, it says total community services expenditures. On down several pages there.
Yes, sir. $150,000?
We start out with $1,350,000 and we end up $149,000 in the hole, it looks like. Can you explain that?
Yes, I see. That $150,000 is the commitment that we made to the YMCA. So it's not actually in our general fund budget, but I pay it out of that. And then now we can transfer the funds from the bond sale. That's what that is.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question on, I think, the general fund cash account. The Waldrop expenditure down at the bottom, is that out of the Easter money?
It is not.
Okay.
That was what we had to do to keep the school running.
I got you.
And we didn't have the grant approved at that, at the point where we were doing this. So this cannot be paid from that.
It was a baller.
It was actually two ballers.
Ballers, et cetera, that went out. We would not have been able to justify it.
I have two questions.
Richard tried that too.
All right, any other questions, Gloria? All right. So Ms. Simmons, you have the big job tonight.
All right, to give a little bit of background on our district strategic plan, due to the closure last year, we did not submit a strategic plan update. So we, many districts are redoing their plan for the 1920 year. So a lot of the data, we don't have because we didn't have testing last year. We didn't do our opinion surveys last year. So you will see the state has advised us just to put COVID there if it's something we were unable to get data for for the 1920 school year. But this was the strategic plan that was created back in 2016. So we really should be developing a new one next year. But because of the delay with COVID, we'll do one more year of this plan and then we'll have the opportunity to create a new one moving forward. So I'm just going to highlight some things within the plan. I'll start at the beginning, but feel free to stop me if you have a specific question. So at the beginning, we start with just our signature page. And then the next few pages are the assurances that we check off. All of those are yes. And there's just a variety of categories from early childhood development and academic assistance to our Education and Economic Development Act, Read to Succeed, Gifted and Talented, academically and artistically gifted and talented. And then our district proficiency-based programs. And just our assurances and terms and conditions for state awards and terms and conditions. There's a few other there at the bottom. So those are all the assurances that we go through each time we create a plan. The stakeholder involvement for the district strategic plan, those are all the people who were involved when they developed it back in 2016. For the needs assessment portion, we just link our state report cards there. And we did the last two years because last year doesn't really have anything on it. So we just did the last two that are linked there. And then the executive summary of needs assessment data findings. Those are pretty much all of our needs assessment data that was looked at and developed when the actual plan was created. So we have some different ones for student achievement broken down by early childhood, elementary and middle and high school. Just some data that was observed by the committee that did the strategic plan and kind of just highlighted those there. Teacher and administrator quality. And then we move into school climate. And then other is talking about our individualized career path. And then we do have some data on the needs assessment for gifted and talented. So you'll see when we move into the actual plan, that's how it's organized, by goals related to student achievement, teacher and administrator quality, school climate. And then we do have goals related to gifted and talented instruction. So when we move into our actual performance goal area for student achievement, our goal there is related to increasing our graduation rate by 1/2% each year. And you can see through our data table there at the bottom, we have our projected data that we set at the very beginning. You can tweak it a little bit, like let's say you surpass your goal and then you can get it higher if that's what you'd like to do. So right now, as of last year, we were at 86.2%. And so we are above where we wanted our projected data to be right there. On the next page, you have to have an action plan that correlates with your strategy. So you'll just see here some of the things that are ELA. So you'll just see here some of the things that are ELA-focused, that we're doing district-wide, with a benchmark reading assessments to ongoing coaching, professional development for our reading coaches, and then our creation implementation of our standards-based timelines. And then we have our math-focused action plan, just dealing with our K-5 math curriculum that we had started implementing in 2017. And then also all of our guided math professional development that we've been doing, mostly focused in elementary and middle school. And then of course, our standards-based timelines that we created and implemented. Our next performance goal area is teacher and administrator quality. And so we have kind of two pieces of data that we're looking at there. The first one goes along with our student learning objectives that our teachers set each year. And so we are wanting at least 95% of our teachers to have a successful SLO. And so we continue to meet that goal. And then in the next part of this performance goal, we're looking at our teacher and student state opinion surveys. Now, last year, those surveys, like I said earlier, were not administered. But we are looking in this category at the learning environment. So all of the different statements that correlate on the survey to learning environment. And our goal is to have all of our schools, both on the teacher survey and on the student survey, to score at least 80% or greater in the agree or strongly agree categories for each statement under learning environment. So as you can see, we have declined a little bit in our student outcomes on this survey. So you know, kind of looking at where we are with that, you know, we're trying to count all of those categories. And there's certain things within our student opinion surveys that, you know, we need to continue to work on. It is something that our district leadership team did spend a lot of time looking at and also coordinated with our district administrators on setting goals for them personally within their school, for their PDEP plans, to help increase these ratings here. So we're hoping, we will be giving them this year. So we hope to see some improvement with our student ratings on that. All right. So this goes into our action plan for our teacher administrator evaluation training. A lot of this work is done in our human resources department with our 4.0 rubric training that our teachers and our evaluators go through. And then we have a separate PDEP evaluation model that our principals go through as well. And all of us on the district leadership team are trained for the PDEP model. And then also we have many evaluators at our school levels as well. And then you can see that our annual SLO or student learning objective training with our administrators and teachers. All right. That moves into our school climate goal. And this is where we also use survey data from the state. We are looking at the category of social and physical environment. And we're looking at that 80% or greater on our parent and our student survey totals. You can see from 2016 to our last administration in 2019, we have regressed a little bit there. And looking at this data, when Dr. Bibb and I are putting our plan together, it has a lot to do with two of the statements related to anti-bullying. So that's when we've now since the administration of our last surveys, we've implemented the Alvea's Anti-Bullying Program at our elementary schools. And we've also done a lot of work with trauma-sensitive schools. So I'm really hoping that we'll see some improvement this time around with those surveys. Because both of the, both the parent and the student survey has statements related around bullying, behavior, those types of things. So that's one of the reasons why we did target implementing an anti-bullying program and some social emotional learning opportunities for our students as well. Okay? So you can see right here that our action plan for strategy one is related around anti-bullying. You also heard on a Gibson, our assistant director of special ed, when she came to report out about our work with the Student Behavioral Health Committee we've been doing over this year and last year. So we're really hoping all of that work has paid off in this category for us for the upcoming years. And then you can also see that we do have a plan of action for our parent communication. And we're even making updates to our website presently, so at the district and school level. So I think that will help even more. We're really utilizing our school messenger system to communicate with our families as well. And then our schools have created a communication plan, so their parents know where to find information about what's going on within their buildings. All right. Then we're moving on to gifted and talented. Our goal is that we would like all of our students who are qualified as academically talented students to meet their math growth target in their area of giftedness. So sometimes you have students who don't qualify as gifted in both math and English Language Arts. They could be one or the other. So Dr. Bibb looked at their growth data from the 18-19 school year, because remember, we were not able to test in the spring last year. But we had 70% of our students that are identified in their area of giftedness did meet their growth rate target for math testing. And so this is one area that we really would like to continue to grow in and be able to qualify more students, but also be able to provide, you know, the rigorous instruction that our gifted students need. So our action plan for this one is just really continuing to evaluate the effectiveness of our gifted programs at all levels. And also making sure that we are looking at our standards-based instruction and how is that being differentiated for those students who do qualify as gifted. So just continued professional development with that. And then our other gifted goal, we're breaking down our subgroups. And so Dr. Bibb and I have worked on this together where we are reporting out on the general population percentage of each one of those subgroups. And then we report out what percentage of that actual general population percentage is qualified as gifted and talented. So we are monitoring these groups annually, but as you can see from that data, we have some work to do to qualify more students, especially in our African-American and Hispanic populations. So we will continue, next year, we have a goal, especially in our department, to really look into our data more within our subgroups, to see, you know, how we can make improvements academically with them. All right. And then we just have our action plan here for things that we're trying to do to continue to improve GT performance in our subgroup areas. And also just being able to talk with our counselors about kind of that non-traditional GT student and wanting to keep our students on that track once they are identified. And really the next tables that are for gifted and talented, it just really shows what we do at each grade level. When we start identifying our students, we don't serve them until they start in the third grade, but they can be identified in second grade prior to starting third grade. We do trial placements for one year for students in our grade levels. And we do a local identification process. And then we also have a withdrawal policy. If there is a parent that would like their child not to participate anymore in the gifted and talented program, we do have a policy where they can like sign their student out of getting that instruction if that's what they feel like they need to do.
Please, if I could stop just a minute.
Yeah.
If that happens, are they still considered identified?
They are, yes.
So they, they're in that percentage whether they participate or not?
That's correct. Yes. And then really the other tables just talk, have like some state codings for the units and the type of instructional resources that can be used. And we do have artistic GT students identified after elementary school. But you know, we're still talking about that a lot at the elementary level, maybe trying to get to some sort of artistic identification. I know our teachers would be really interested in that. And so then we just have some ways that we notify about screenings and the identification process through newsletters, websites, and then sending home notification letters to parents at the school level. And then our district proficiency-based system plan evaluation really deals with our high schools and Oconee Academy and how they are using Apex, Virtual SC for content and credit recovery. And you can kind of read, we've got what each high school and Oconee Academy does in those situations. We have a list of Apex courses that have been offered. And also the teachers of record for those classes, as well as all of our Virtual SC classes that students have been participating in. And the teachers of record, which are really those, a lot of those teachers are, some of them are ours and some of them are teachers that are hired through Virtual SC as well. And we've had a big increase of Virtual SC participants across the state. So there was a lot of new teachers to add. But you can take a look at what our high schools are doing. A lot of them are doing the same types of things. The one great thing about Apex is if they just need some content recovery, the teacher's able to differentiate and sign particular units, modules, things like that, to fill in those learning gaps for students and that type of thing. So we're always looking at ways that we can help and support our students. And then the very last page is just our 2020 district summer school program site identification. And we did have this going on last year. We tackled summer reading camp virtually last year. And Amanda Scott, our director, she did a fantastic job. And then our three middle schools did do some summer school last year, right before school started. And they were kind of our guinea pigs with a lot of our safety protocols and things like that. And it went very, very well for them at that level. And that's it.
A lot of information.
That will be on for approval at next week's meeting.
At next week.
And so really, we're just approving it for one year. But we won't write a new strategic plan until 2022. Is that what I'm hearing?
We'll start that process 20, yes.
So this will be the end of a five-year strategic plan?
But it's going to be more than five years because of the [inaudible].
With a lot of work, a lot of information. So we will, that and that then next, at next week's meeting. Anybody have any other questions? All right. Let's look at the 2022 budget calendar.
Okay. I have been in contact with the finance department for the county and for, and with the council clerk. And think of these dates will work. We will have the budget ready for first reading next week. Of course, you know, we have to keep working on it because legislature's not finished yet. And we're still moving people around. So that will be first reading next week. County council, we will be, administration will be going to talk to county council on May the fourth at their budget and finance committee meeting. Our first meeting in May, we will have a discussion and public hearing. And then with the second meeting in May, we'll ask you to do second reading. County council meets on the 18th and they will have first reading. Then their second reading will be June 1st. And right now, we're, I think we're going to ask you to meet on June 7th. And that is our regular meeting day, on June 7th for our final reading, our third reading. And then the county council will meet on the 22nd of June for their third final meeting. Unless there's a conflict or problem with that, with any of you all. Okay. Sounds like a plan then.
Does sound like a plan. Just a lot of unknowns.
Do y'all want us to go with you or what does that typically look like?
It's usually fairly informal. They separate our budget from the county budget. In the past, we've gone over and Miss Moore does the majority of the presenting. But they listen and then we usually leave it before the meetings over. It's just a pretty informal process. So you're welcome to come. I certainly don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, we've kind of done it both ways, so I don't think it's.
We kind of leave that up to you. Well, if we feel the need, we'll certainly call you, reach out, see if you can come. But otherwise, I think it would just be if you're interested in seeing the process across the street. We've got a really good relationship with staff across the street. So they communicate with us very effectively. And then, you know, basically comes down to the vote of the county council.
And the public hearing on May 10th, we'll start at 5:30. That will, we've been doing.
We have done that in the past. We have had it right before the meeting. But we can do it either way.
We can do that. However, I think, honestly, last year we did it during the meeting. As long as it's on the agenda and it gives the public a chance to come in and reflect on budget, that's.
Right. Great. Okay.
Good.
Now, chair, the meeting will be. All right. So does anyone have any questions or any conflicts with any of those dates? It's kind of an interesting process because we really don't, still don't know.
Mainly should have to get set until September, but we haven't.
Well, thank you, Gloria. I know y'all are busy at it and we appreciate all that you're doing and this. And then Dr. Thorson, board meeting date changes?
Yes. And I, Ms. Bay changed this exhibit at the last minute today because I did not remember the second change we were going to ask you to make. So the first one was we would like to move the board meeting to the afternoon of June 7th, rather than wait until July, mainly because we'd like to get the goals taken care of and voted on at that time. But, so that's just, we would normally do that in 2:30 or 3 to 5:30 or so. And that's when we're going to have our directors of different departments, representatives from our different departments come in. And we talked about that this morning. We just have some basic information for you and ask the directors to give you just, you know, three to five minutes about things going on in their department. But the most important thing we want is that interaction. We want you to be able to ask questions and interact with them. So we'll try to do that on June 7th if that works. And then the July meeting was scheduled for July 12th. But the reason we would like for you to consider changing that to the 19th, if it fits in your schedule, is because the 12th is our first day back from, we traditionally close the week of the 4th. And that falls after the 4th primarily this year. So that Monday, the 12th, is our first day back. So Ms. Bay won't be here the week before to send out the agenda. So we just would like to delay our July meeting one week to the 19th. So it'll be two fairly minor changes to the board meeting schedule. And it's not anything that needs action tonight. This will be something that will be on next week's agenda if you are, so you know.
Yeah, so if everybody will just check their calendars.
Check calendars and see if those things.
See if it works. We'll do that also next week. Okay? All right. Anybody have anything they forgot or any questions of anyone, Mr. Hempe? I cannot believe that you're just sitting there quietly.
I decided I get to talk in executive session. All my [inaudible].
Okay. All right. All right. Well, if there is nothing else for our regular meeting then, we have executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations and changes, and also a 2021, 2022 professional contract approval. So if there are no objections, we will approve going into executive session. Okay. Thank you very much.